All right, we're ready. Are we going to call this meeting to order? The date is, it's a good question. November 4th, 2020. The time is 7:31 PM. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall by mail to the Ridgewood News, the record and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perrin?
Here.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Seiden?
Here.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Here.
Mayor Knudsen?
Here. Please join us for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us in a moment of silence for our men and women serving our nation, our first responders, police and fire, and our both our blue and gold bar families. Thank you. With that, we'll start with public comment. Now, you see three minutes per person for a total of 40 minutes. Dylan, can you just tell us who's in the queue?
Okay, anybody liking to speak, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand. All right, bring in the first person.
Very good. Please unmute and state your name and address for the record, please.
Press star six to unmute. There you go.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Erin Taddy, 419 Bogart Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey.
Good evening, Erin. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I want to begin by congratulating One Village, One Vote on their victory. And I'm so glad that the democratic process prevailed and that the people's voices were heard despite all the obstacles that they had to overcome. It really speaks volumes about the democratic process. And it's unfortunate that it was such a long arduous road to get there, but I want to commend them for their stick-to-itiveness and their ultimate success. Even if you don't like it, it's a celebration of democracy that people got an opportunity to vote on it and the people have spoken. Congratulations to them. Second of all, I really want to call and say I'm very distressed to hear that Health Barn has been denied an option to renew their lease. I volunteer extensively at Ridgecrest Senior Housing and I have seen firsthand the immeasurable generosity that Health Barn has shown the residents of Ridgecrest. We're living in a time where it is particularly challenging to be a senior right now. Many of the seniors that I know there face food insecurity on a regular basis and Health Barn has been beyond, beyond generous to them. I would encourage all of you to maybe go take a look, if you can, to the pantry, the Eugene Thomas pantry and see the freezer stocked with the incredible soup that Stacy and Health Barn have provided. I know some of you have never made it over there yet, so if you need directions, I'm happy to tell you how to get there. It would be nice for you to show up there and to see the incredible generosity that Health Barn has shown. I don't see why there would be any benefit of not continuing to keep a business that is so philanthropic and generous and beneficial to our most vulnerable citizens in our community, our seniors. So I know that supposedly this was discussed behind closed doors for some reason, but I really, really hope that it can be revisited. There was a phenomenal article about Health Barn in 201 magazine today and it really shows what a jewel it is in our community. So I sincerely hope, I know Pam, it seems like you've been an advocate of maybe trying to help from what I understand. So I'm really hoping that you'll do the right thing and try to help keep this phenomenal business in town. We're counting on you, Pam. Please speak for the good people of Ridgecrest Senior Housing. We need you to advocate for them. I can't imagine what it's like right now to be a senior citizen who is afraid to leave your home, number one, because we're facing a global pandemic. Number two, perhaps financially, facing difficulties and having to make a choice as to providing medication or buying food to have the people that are supposed to speak for me and advocate for me in my town.
Time is up.
All right.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Erin. Have a good evening.
Okay, next person is Christina Zubach.
Good evening, Christina. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Christina Zubach, 415 Hawthorne Place, Ridgewood, New Jersey. I'm also calling regarding Stacy and Health Barn. I was born and raised in Ridgewood and now I'm raising my own children in Ridgewood. And I just wanted to talk about the benefit it's been to us. My daughter attends Health Barn currently and she's had a lot of nutritional problems since she was born. She, she's a very picky eater and she doesn't, she has had some different health problems because of her limited diet. And my husband and I have tried different programs. We even hired a nutritionist trying to get her to try and have a more balanced diet and we really had very little success. And then about a year ago, I bumped into another mom, a friend in the supermarket, and she told me about Health Barn her son had attended. So I quickly signed Maria up and it's been truly a transformational experience for us and especially for Maria with her eating. She, you know, Stacy has this amazing way of getting the kids to interact with all of the food and all the types of things they garden. They use all their senses. They smell the herbs, they touch the textures, and then they, they harvest food and they make snacks with the healthy snacks. And it really has encouraged Maria to start to try new foods and it's helped us a lot at home. And I was devastated to hear that her contract might not be, you know, may not be renewed. And I just wanted to call to beg you to reconsider as a, as a parent, to see how it's helped my child. And I know that Stacy will be able to help many other children like mine in the future as she already has, if she's given the opportunity to continue doing the good work that she does.
Thank you, Christina. We hope Maria continues to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next person is Siobhan Winograd.
Good evening, Siobhan. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Siobhan Kram Winograd, 274 Ivy Place. I was calling because I was so excited to see the divergence issue on the agenda. And as some of you know, I live in the neighborhood where the original park went missing in the early eighties at Woodside Park. I, along with a couple of other neighbors, have spoken about this. So we're so excited to see it moving forward. Since Ramon left, we hadn't heard an update in a while. And so it's so good to see it back there. You know, when you have your discussions tonight, we would love to, from the neighborhood, see a couple of things, like a copy of where the new piece of land would be and know when the hearing will be. Well, clearly, we'd love for the park to come back to this neighborhood. We, if that can't be done, we do think it's in Ridgewood's best interest to, you know, move this issue along, free it up and get the money from Green Acres that we're owed. So, you know, outside of our own interests, which is within our neighborhood, we are concerned with Ridgewood and that money. So if anybody could follow up, I don't know exactly how we'll get that. When you have the discussion, I know many Woodside Park residents would be interested in the detail. The other thing I did just want to add, I too am a big fan of Health Barn. Both my kids have attended sessions there and with all the work with Ridgecrest, they've been so beneficial to the seniors. This Sunday is the Elder Dinner where we will be packing up 200 meals for seniors. I know many of you have attended the event in the past years and this year we can't do it in person. And the committee was committed to making this happen. And I want to thank both Bernadette and Pam for their help with that. And as we move forward, you know, it's just really, really important because so many seniors have become reliant on the services Stacy provides. And, you know, personally speaking, I just think it's a really good look for our community. So I look forward to hearing about the divergence issue and I encourage all of you to be as supportive of Health Barn as possible.
Thank you, Siobhan. Have a good evening.
Okay, our next person is Carrie.
Hi, Carrie. Could you just unmute? I think it's star six.
No, she's on the computer. She can just hit unmute.
There you go. Okay, hi Carrie. Could you please say?
Hi, I'm Carrie Austin, 120 Lake Avenue, Ridgewood. And I'm calling because of Health Barn as well. My daughter had some really great experiences there. She's special needs. One of the hallmark characteristics of her disorder is obesity. And Stacy did a really wonderful job with a group of special needs kids. She organized several weekends, Friday nights, where they had somewhere to go. And not only was it just fun, it was educational as well. So my daughter really got a whole lot out of it. And I guess I'm curious to, I'm not quite certain why there isn't more transparency about this. And I thought I would state that concern as well, but I'm a big proponent of Health Barn. I think they do really great things. Stacy was very generous with her time and her energy and I'd like to see it continue for our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Have a good evening.
Okay. Next person is Alexis Gordon.
Good evening, Alexis. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Alexis Gordon. I live at 143 Forest Road in Glen Rock, next door. I'm calling about the Health Barn because it's truly helped my family. And forgive me, but I'm so emotional hearing these other mothers talk about their experience because it was the same for us. And I really hope that you can work things out so that the Health Barn can keep supporting children in the community. My child's Ridgewood feeding therapist referred us to the Health Barn. And our therapist was hopeful that taking classes would help supplement the medical treatment that my child received. And it made such a positive impact. The program was fun, it was challenging, and everyone there was so nurturing, which if you have a child that has feeding issues, I can't explain how important that is. The other thing is that the setting of the park was so important because for children that have feeding issues, to have that tactile experience from really like the planting to when they're going to put it in their mouth is so important. And I have to say that my child is no longer in feeding therapy and I give credit for part of our journey to the Health Barn and helping our family and helping our child. So I realize I'm from the town next door, but I do hope that you all can work it out so that more children can be helped. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Have a good evening.
Okay. Next person, Eliza Rivera.
Hi, good evening, Eliza. I'm new, there you go. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, how are you? I'm actually Alejandro Rivero.
Alejandro.
I'm just using. That's where you see her name in there. I live on 349 Meadowbrook Avenue in Ridgewood. And I'm also calling to express my support for Health Barn and for the village to give them the option to renew the lease. And this is why, one of the reasons I moved to Ridgewood more than 11 years ago was because it was such a unique atmosphere. After a few months, I realized it was more than the cute neighborhood. It was more of a sense of community that makes this village such a magnet for families in the area. And Ridgewood is famous for the experiences it offers to anyone who gets involved in the community. It's not only because we have great schools, because many towns have that. My wife and I visited Haverickl many times when our kids played soccer there. But we also have gone to Haverickl to attend a couple of fundraisers organized by Health Barn. And we were really very impressed by the work that Stacy is doing. Their educational programs where they teach kids and adults healthy nutrition and sustainable use of the land made me remember similar programs at the New York Botanical Garden, which is a world-class institution. Also, I know that they have participated in programs to support our first responders while at the same time helping our local restaurants during this pandemic. So I think that initiatives like this is what make Ridgewood special and differentiated for so many generic towns in the area. So I would like to ask the council to consider evaluating the option for them to renew the lease. My two cents.
Thank you, Alejandro. Say hi to Elisa.
All right. And KJ Chin.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, KJ.
Needs to unmute.
Oh, and star six.
There you go.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Kathy Chin. I live at 708 Heights Road. I live in the Willa District, so about less than a mile from the Health Barn. I don't have a childhood road in the Health Barn, but I do support the Health Barn because it benefits the community and it's inclusive and includes non-Ridgewood residents. We are part of Bergen County, Bergen County community. We cannot live in insular life and only seek experience that are exclusive to Ridgewood residents. We benefit when we have shared experience with others outside our comfort zone. In addition, participants in the Health Barn are potential customers who can shop in our stores and restaurants in downtown Ridgewood. I think this is a win-win for our community and for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Have a good evening.
All right. Anybody else want to speak? Please raise your hands. One more. Judith Braun.
Hi, Judith. Good evening. Please unmute.
Hello.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Judith Braun. I live at 245 Claremont Road in Ridgewood. I just want to say that the Health Barn has been an incredible asset to my family in so many aspects. My grandchildren have taken court classes there, which has improved their, their sense of nutrition and diet. It's been extremely helpful for me in cooking for them. But in addition to that, it's been a, because we just moved here five years ago, it's been a social gathering and a, an educational, an educational experience for us to learn more about nutrition. Stacy is amazing and has done so many good things. I can't even imagine that people would not want them to stay here. It's, it's, it's a unique, from, from an experience, from coming from another area in the country, I've never come across such a unique experience as this. And I think it's very special and I hope that, I hope that you will consider renewing the lease. And that's.
Okay, thanks, Judith. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Next person, Christine Malloy.
Hey, Christine. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Christine Malloy. I live at 243 North Pleasant Avenue. I am going to tell you a very quick story. My preschooler, well, now she's seven, but when she was four and five, we took several classes at the Health Barn together. And these parades of kids would follow Stacy and her co-teacher out to the garden in whatever weather. We went out there in December when it was freezing and when it was warm in April. The kids didn't complain and they marched through the garden and they explored it. They tasted leaves, they touched the leaves, they smelled different herbs, they got their hands dirty and they planted seeds. They watched the compost pile, learned how the worms eat up all the food waste. We had to come home and start our own compost pile. The kids went inside the Health Barn and learned about the importance of eating the rainbow and they took things from the garden that they picked themselves and made pizza and smoothies. And for the kids, watching your child make that kind of connection to being able to grow food and then to be able to enjoy it, even if they didn't necessarily love what they were eating, they were tasting and exploring. And so many of those lessons have stayed with my kids. And I just think the Health Barn is a great asset to the community. Besides just taking my kids there for classes, I hosted several Girl Scout events there and we never had a complaint there. The kids have a great time. They learn a lot. They all participate and it's just such a positive experience for everyone. So I just asked that you renew the lease. The Health Barn is an asset to our community. Stacy was a huge part of the Feed the Frontlines initiative that helped keep our Ridgewood restaurants in business in the early days of the pandemic. And also she does the tremendous work with, with Ridgecrest. So I, I asked that you renew the lease. If this is a great small business to have in our community and I think it makes Ridgewood a better town to live in.
Thank you, Christine. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You too.
All right, and Zach Pace.
Hi, good evening, Zach. Hopefully it is Zach and not somebody else.
Hi, how are you? This is Zach Pace, 246 South Irving Street. I'm not sure if this is the right form, but I've been working with Nancy and Matt in the Parks and Recs Department and they mentioned that this might be a good place to talk about the gift for the food truck system. Is this, is this the right form for that?
The food truck system.
Yes, the fire suppression system. Yeah, you can make.
For the concession. Oh yeah, the fire suppression. I didn't, I misunderstood what you said. Hey Zach, yes. You can make a comment, sure. I think it's on our agenda.
Oh, okay. If it's better for me to talk at another time, I just, it was my first time doing this.
No, no, you can go ahead and speak now. Go ahead.
Okay. Great, thank you. So I just wanted to say how great Nancy and Matt have both been with, and now as well Mary, with all the help that they've been giving us. The food truck is something that the Ridgewood Junior Football Youth Program uses quite a bit for their game days. It's really a benefit to the, to the community and the families, especially if they've got siblings at multiple games. So the food's been great and a nice atmosphere. When we tried to get the permit this year, we learned that we didn't have the latest, up-to-date fire suppression systems. And so to do so, that it would require, we got a number of estimates, but I think the final estimate that we got was $3,200. And so I'd just like to say that Ridgewood Junior Football would like to donate that money to have that system installed, you know, whenever the permitting is done and so on and so forth. And I think there needs to be an approval process for it and whatnot. So I just wanted to make myself available if there's any questions about, you know, why we want the gift or what kind of benefit it has or anything else. And also just to say how thankful we are with the Parks and Rec Department and all the work they've done to help us out.
Zach, thank you. It is on our agenda for this evening and I think we have our next public meeting, it would be adopted by resolution. It's a gift and actually we appreciate it. And it sounds like there's some football going on in the background, so all good.
Yeah, I'm at practice now, so I just wanted to.
We just love it. It's so good. Have fun and thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I have no others.
Okay, great. Very good. Okay, so just real quick, in, in response to the comments regarding Health Barn, just to give a little background, I know that there's a lot of information circulating about a lot of misinformation and council members have received a number of emails regarding Health Barn, the business operation that's located at the Haverickl Park. A recent closed session discussion regarding a lease or contract negotiation occurred and that was, as a matter of fact, as a result of some interaction between New Jersey Green Acres, the DEP and the village. And it was considered a contract or lease negotiation due to, I believe, the date on the lease, the termination date indicated that it was January 2021. But during that closed session, I think between myself and Deputy Mayor Seiden, I think the two of us were confused because even though that was the date reflected on the lease, we, having been in the, on council at the time, and I personally, that was part of the review on the, on the lease, we recognized that either there was an error on that lease or that it didn't reflect an added year, which was an option that the tenant could exercise. So that one-year option was as a result of a capital improvement investment to outfit the location for the business needs. Through that capital improvement investment, there was one, one-year option that again was the sole discretion of the tenant to exercise. So with that, we, as a village council, simply instructed the village manager to request the business owner make a decision as to whether or not she was going to exercise her option to continue for the year. She answered in the affirmative and is going to continue and therefore the business will continue uninterrupted. Any future lease agreements or potential businesses are subject to a legal bid process as required by law and therefore there are simply just no guarantees as to what happens with any lease in the future. That's just part of a bidding process. So, you know, some of the emails, and I have to say in one of my little social chat groups, you know, there were even suggestions that the village council voted behind closed doors, that this village council was not transparent, that we voted behind closed doors and we made these decisions. And personally in this, it's hard for us to comment and I certainly don't comment in those environments. We really just almost can't. But the village council doesn't vote on any, take any action in closed session. Anything we do, any vote we take is in open, in full public view, but a contract negotiation or lease negotiation has to be in closed session. So there's a lot of misinformation out there and I appreciate all the folks, the comments, and we understand the benefits, certainly the benefits of Health Barn provided, especially to some of the children that we've, we've heard the stories. And, you know, we just want to make it clear that there was no vote taken in closed session and that this is a, a one-year option that the, the tenant had the discretion to exercise and, and she opted to do so. So, and we appreciate that the village manager got that information back to us as quickly as she did. And again, the business continues uninterrupted. So moving on, with that, we will go on to council report, a manager's report. I'm sorry, Heather.
Okay. The Hudson Street Garage is now open on all levels. There will be a ribbon cutting ceremony this Friday, November 6th at 4:00 PM at the Hudson Street entrance. Everyone is invited to attend this milestone event. Please note the parking requirements for each level of the garage. It's, the charge is $1 an hour. The first level is three-hour parking, second and third levels, premium Ridgewood parking permits. Fourth level is half dedicated to non-premium parking permits and the other half to CBD employees. The CBD employees must have an employee sticker, CBD employee sticker, or pay by Park Mobile or by CBD employee hang tag. These are all available at the reception desk in Village Hall. All levels from 12 noon forward, anyone can park for three-hour increments. I want to give you an update on the election from the Bergen County Board of Elections. They have received over 450,000 ballots at this point in time. They can receive mail-in ballots until November 10th, provided they were postmarked by November 3rd. Provisional ballots cannot be counted until all mail-in ballots are counted. Provisionals will not be counted until after November 11th. The election will be certified on November 20th. Voters' ballot received status will stay as received until after the certification, likely in December. And all results will be updated on their website every night where updates are available after 6:00 PM. And the website is www.bergencountyvotes.com. The next item is a 2020 leaf collection. Please remember that the dates on your postcard for your area for pickup are leaf placement dates. Our crews arrive after the leaf placement dates and they pick up your leaves. Once your leaf placement dates have passed, do not put leaves out again until you're following the leaf placement dates. Further details are on the village website on the leaf collection tile on the homepage. The Fifth Annual Giving Thanks Ridgewood Elder Dinner to celebrate what we are grateful for, good friends, family and a nutritious and delicious home-cooked Thanksgiving meal. That's on November 8th. People have reserved and are going to pick up their meals. People have reserved and are going to pick up their meals. And it will be a frozen meal. It'll be a grab-and-go at the Old Paramus Reform Church. So reheating instructions will be provided so they can all take it home and enjoy. Welcome back to Ridgewood, New Jersey. Event continues this weekend. Includes outdoor dining all day Saturday and Sunday, East Ridgewood Avenue from Broad Street to Walnut Street. And the side streets of Oak Chestnut and Prospect Street are close to cars to make a pedestrian mall. Retailers are also out into the streets, as are the restaurants. The West Village over by the train station has wonderful shops and eateries as well, so please go over there as well. Since this is weather-dependent, please check the homepage of the village website to find out if the pedestrian mall will be held in the coming weekend. The best time to check would probably be Friday night as weather is unpredictable, especially this time of year. On November 14th, from 9:00 AM to 12:30, rain or shine, in the Great and Full Parking Lot, there will be a shredding event. You can watch your documents being shredded, shredded on camera to prove that it's confidential shredding. This is free to all Ridgewood residents and businesses, limited to five cardboard boxes per vehicle. Please don't put your paper into plastic bags. On the same day, Saturday, November 14th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, the Bergen County Utilities Authority will hold their Household Hazardous Waste Collection. This will be at the Bergen County Utilities Authority, which is the foot of Empire Boulevard. Free to Bergen County residents. ID is required. On Wednesday, November 11th, American Legion Post 53 will observe Veterans Day with a service at 11:00 AM in Memorial Park of Venice Square. If you wish to sit, we ask that you please bring your own chair because we are going to have very limited socially-distanced seating, probably about 12 chairs. I know that service usually draws more people than that. So if you do have a folding chair and wish to sit, I would recommend you bring it. But all are invited to attend. It's a lovely service. Good news, the Farmer's Market is open Sundays from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM and it will continue through November 22nd. All village offices will be closed on November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. Sanitation and recycling will not be picked up on that day and the recycling center will also be closed. Village offices will also be closed November 26th and 27th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Recycling and sanitation pickup will take place on the Friday after Thanksgiving. Recycling Center will be open on Friday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Village Council upcoming meetings are broadcast live on YouTube. They are also streamed on our website. They're also on the public access channels. They will be on November 9th. Next week is on a Monday because of the fact that the holiday is on Wednesday. That's at 8:00 PM. That's our public meeting. December 2nd is a village council public work session at 7:30 PM. And then December 9th is a village council public meeting at 8:00 PM. That's all I have.
We're going to council reports. We'll start with Councilwoman Perrin.
The CBDAC, the Central Business District Advisory Committee, met on October 29th. And we discussed what we had learned the week before at a presentation about a business improvement district. And we went around and each of us gave our impressions. And we pretty much agreed that now is not the time to execute a business improvement district. However, now is the time to educate ourselves and to plan for the future. We also had a consensus that what we need to start with is look at what tasks we already have, that we have covered, an inventory of what we can, we are already doing. And then look at what yet needs to be done and addressed so that we don't duplicate efforts. We already have a Chamber of Commerce and a Guild and we don't want to do the same thing that they're doing. And let's see, Grab and Go, we are processing the six-month pilot process now. We are nearly fully subscribed. I think there is one or two and a half spots left to be sold. And the time for signing up ends tomorrow, the 5th. And I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for facilitating that. We did have one person resign, one resident member resigned from the CBDAC. And so I would like to start thinking about filling that vacancy. And none of my other committees met.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had my field committee meeting yesterday. And there was a couple of, you know, things that we went over in terms of organized sports that are going on. And the NJSIAA rules that are in effect for COVID. So we're into phase two for that. So there are going to be a lot of sports that will be happening throughout the village, just to name a few. Basketball, track, ice hockey, cheer, wrestling. They're going to be limited to 25 people per practice session. So you will probably see different sessions going on in different locations as they can still use the outdoor facilities while it's, while the weather is still, was still good. They gave an update on the Fields Maintenance Trust account. And there's a balance there for special projects. The lights, things like that can come out of that trust account. So they're just, they just wanted to just get an accounting of what was still in that account. While Orchard Field is offline, there is going to be some use at maybe some of the other fields, maybe a little bit more use in some of the other fields. So that orchards, grass can get a chance to grow and stabilize since that has been reseeded. The, a couple of the different, again, I was mentioning, a couple of different sports teams need to kind of shift around. So there is going to be some, some additional activity at the, at the roller hockey there. So, so there are going to be, you know, they're trying to make do with what they have in terms of sharing fields during, during COVID and following all the rules. Then I had my stigma-free meeting this afternoon and a lot of good stuff going on. I know that a lot of people participated in the scarecrows that are up at Ridgecrest. There is a stigma-free scarecrow up there. So the idea was to decorate them and, and, you know, have a little bit of a fall decoration so that, so that the seniors up there could appreciate the fall that's going on. They're also talking about, you know, doing some other things within the town to kind of remind people about stigma-free. I mentioned last week about our bingo card. So our bingo card is done. We're going to be putting it out to the public and a couple of different options. We're hoping that we'll be able to put it online with the village website, the library website, Facebook website. So we want to be able to get it out to everybody as, as much as we can electronically because the squares have links to them that can, for instance, you know, take a walk with a neighborhood group or something. So it can link to Ridgewood Walks so that you can, you know, catch a walk or something. So, so all of the little bingo boxes, we're hoping that you can at least do a single row. We'd love for you to do as many things as you can on the card. It depends on how ambitious. And we're still putting together maybe some little giveaways when you complete a row or two so that you can kind of stay, stay active and stay, you know, enthused with, with stigma-free. Dawn and her team are working to apply for a number of different grants. So they're really busy doing that because they basically have to get all that stuff together. And we talked about Cards, Cards of Hope. I know that a lot of people participated in that last year and it basically is doing holiday cards or basically cards of, you know, we're with you in the holidays. And they will go out to seniors and people who maybe need a little pick-me-up or need a card. So we're just making sure that we're doing everything properly for COVID because so many people will be touching the cards. To make the cards, how are they going to then be sequestered for a little bit so that they're COVID-free? So we're still working on that and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to say Cards for Hope was such a big hit and so appreciated. Sure that it's just a phenomenal program. So grateful that we're in that again. Councilwoman Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so the planning board met last night. We listened to a second night of the Hopper Ridge Condominium Association application. This application looks to seek approval to put up a modular concrete block wall because the current crib walls are nearing the end of their life. And this is a very large project. It's going to take many months to complete. And it's going to involve approximately 150 truckloads going in and out of the complex. Many of the trucks are going to be utilizing, there's an entrance through Cedar Avenue. That entrance runs kind of parallel behind North Irving Street. So it, it's going to involve like a very large area. Last night, we heard the engineer finish his little speech and then the planning board members got to ask questions. And by then, it was, it was like the end of the night and it was carried to December 1st. So I know a lot of residents who are in the area were on the Zoom meeting. And, you know, I'm sure they wanted to speak. It was probably getting frustrating for them, listening to two nights of testimony and not be able to say anything. So if anybody's listening now, I kind of just want to explain as a layperson who had sat through many, many years of planning board meetings, just an easy way to explain it is the applicant always goes first. They have their experts speak. After each expert speaks, the board members can ask questions of that expert. Then if there's any village experts that want to ask questions of that expert, that's next. And then the public will get to ask questions, but specifically just on that expert's testimony. If the public wants to just make a general comment about the application, that comes all the way at the end after all the experts spoke. So hopefully that's more understandable. I know a lot of people were confused last night if they wanted to speak. So it's being carried to December 1st. And it'll start with the village engineer asking questions of this engineer and then the public will be able to ask questions. And then Citizen Safety Advisory Committee isn't going to meet till November 19th and that's it. Thanks.
So thanks. I guess that sage advice came from not just a current planning board member, but a seasoned planning board. Deputy Mayor Seaton.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report.
Oh, okay. Great. All right. So I just have a couple of items. So I just want to first tag to Councilwoman Reynolds' comments about last night's planning board meeting. We, I actually received a ton of emails regarding the Hopper Ridge Condominium Association application. And I know we get a lot of emails even about Health Barn and I wanted to speak to that. When we don't respond and I don't respond, and this goes to my many years on both the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board is because specifically to the emails that come from, come to the, speak to the applications before Land Use Board. Those are quasi-judicial and, and legal processes. Those are applications before a municipal land use board. And so when, when we don't see responses to those, it's not because we're not wanting to respond, but we understand that there's a process. And legally, we can't take that information into account nor should we be responding. And I know that maybe at some point, Mr. Rogers can speak to that as well. But I, I think it's a, it's a legal question. And, and those comments that come by email can't be taken into consideration when we're hearing applications. And so it, it could lend itself to some lack of impartiality. And so it's, it's important. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Matt?
Just that it has to do with the opportunity for the other side or the adversary to the comments to cross-examine and ask questions about it. It's really a matter of due process, which is why they don't allow any written letters, emails as evidence and be considered for, you know, planning board hearings, so.
And so, and so, you know, we get emails and, you know, you feel bad that you're not responding. So we just forward that all to our secretary and allow that to be just entered into the record and hope that everybody jumps in and participates at the appropriate time as Councilwoman Reynolds had pointed out. I just wanted to let everyone know that we did finalize our right application for recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities today, which was a bit of an achievement because the system from the DCA was a little bit complicated and getting through that process. But that's good news because that's our $20,000 grant with our $4,000 match. So there's a couple of options that we have or a couple of programs that we have already scheduled and slated for those funds. I didn't, I don't think I had anything else. Oh, yes, one last item. On our, I wanted to speak to the Business Improvement District as well. Our village planner, Mary Abuchi-Carter, had sent to the planning board at the planning board request quite some time ago information regarding Business Improvement District. And that process either starts from the village council or from the planning board. So she did provide information to us. And, and we're going to be reviewing that as we move forward. But I think we were all kind of in agreement that this is probably not the best time. But it's certainly something to look at in the future when it's, when it's maybe more conducive to, to implementing. So just as an aside to that, I just want to-
Can you share that? Can you share that?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll forward that, but I, I just want to make sure that it goes through the proper channels with the planning board as well. Okay? So with that, that's all I have. And, oh, I did actually, I'm sorry, one last thing. I just wanted to thank the village manager. Friday evening, Jamboree had scheduled to do some filming and production work because Jamboree this year will be a virtual event and will not be a live event due to the restrictions of COVID-19. And there was a little hiccup late Friday evening. And we wound up with a flurry of activity, phone calls, text messages and such. And the village manager and village staff jumped in. I've never actually seen anything happen so quickly in all my years of, of being involved in village government. It was just amazing. And my understanding is Jamboree had a really, really, really successful filming and production time out in the field. And we look forward to that coming in the very near future. So we just really, Jamboree would like to extend a debt of gratitude to the village manager and village staff that, that got that to happen so quickly. So thank you. And with that, we're moving on to our regular meeting.
Okay, our discussion items. The first one is Ridgewood Water. Ridgewood Water has identified water treatment transmission and distribution infrastructure improvements in need of rehabilitation or replacement. A list of project locations include Godwin Avenue in Ridgewood, Kingwell in Ridgewood, Lake Road in Wyckoff, Lakeview Drive in Ridgewood, Lakeview Transfer Station in Wyckoff, Nauset Lane in Ridgewood, Utility Right of Way in Ridgewood, Ames Tank in Wyckoff, and Denim Place in Glen Rock. These improvement projects include critical transmission water mains having undesirable materials with reliability or capacity issues and distribution water mains having water quality reliability or capacity issues, some which are beyond their useful life. For a majority of the locations, the consultant will produce construction documents for bid as well as construction administrative services. At other locations, the consultant will conduct a feasibility study to determine the most appropriate method for future rehabilitation. So proposals were sent out. They were pre-qualified engineering firms and suburban consulting engineers of Flanders, New Jersey provided the lowest cost and $194,765. And this is funded in the water capital budget.
I had a question.
Okay, sure.
I don't know, Rich, I guess nobody's here to answer.
I could get an answer for you.
Yeah, I was just curious about the unknown material distribution means. Like, it's actually-
Like I, I, it's actually, I was just confused by that. Somebody knows what it is.
What page you want?
I'm sorry, where does it say that?
It's, it names the material. It's probably that the, the pipes are so old, nobody knows what they're made of and there's no record to say what they are made of. So they're gonna have to dig it up and just find out. I would imagine that would be probably the answer.
Oh, so you're just saying the ma- the mains are unknown of, made of unknown material.
Right, right. They don't know what it was made of.
Okay, got it. Understood. Right, all right. Thank you, Michael. I will give that if I, if nobody else is here, Mike would be able to answer the questions.
I have a question for Matt, too. Are, are you done, Susan? I didn't mean to.
Oh, yeah, good, sure.
On page eight, it speaks, this contract speaks to the, well, uh, the proposal speaks to the statute of limitations. And it says the parties agree that any action relating to an alleged breach of, of the agreement shall be commenced within one year of the date of the breach without regard to the date the breach is discovered. And I was just, I, I can't say I've ever seen that kind of a clause. I'm, I'm a little concerned about what if a breach comes to our attention after that one year?
Yeah, normally, I mean, as, as you may know, normally contractual breaches have a six-year statute of limitations in New Jersey. This um, agreement wasn't run by me or provided to me yet, so um, I think they'll probably give it to me to look at. Maybe tomorrow after the council decides they wanna go ahead with this and then that'll, you know, be one of the issues we bring up.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, the next item is under parking. Um, how are they parking in lots on Saturdays in December in the past? The village council has um, allowed there to be free parking in the parking lots in the Saturdays leading up to the Christmas holiday. This allows them, uh, you know, shoppers, diners to come in and, you know, maybe shop some, have a bite to eat and then shop some more. And it puts those people into the lots and then also frees up the streets for people who may just want to um, you know, park on the street in front, directly in front of a store and go in and shop there and then um, move on. So um, that's up to the councils. They want to do it. Um, obviously, we do have a deficit in our parking revenue, but certainly Mr. Rooney has said that um, we could afford to do this, um, you know, in the sense that it's something of goodwill that the um, council has done in the past.
So just the lots would be free and the meter, the kiosks on the street would still remain?
If you parked on the street, but not in the lots, the, the um, determination the council also has to consider is do you want them to still have to pay in the garage? Or do you wish that to still be paid? Because it's not a lot anymore. It's a garage. So that's, that's up to the council's decision if you decide to move forward with this um, with this proposal.
Yeah, so I, I'm always good for the lots to be free during, during the time. I guess we'll have to have a conversation about the garage. Because now we're not talking about seventy-five spaces anymore. Conversation.
I, I mean, I think it, go ahead.
I can see both sides of it. I, I really would like to make that gesture to residents and shoppers and diners. Um, it's part of the holiday season and and we've done it for years. I'd love to continue it. A- at the same time, the parking utility has taken such a hit under COVID. Those are the things I'm thinking about. I can't say I come down either side right now. I wanna hear what everybody else has to say.
Wait, what are the dates again, Heather? I'm sorry.
It would be um, December fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth.
Okay, so it's three days. I mean, I, I do think it would provide a lot of goodwill. And I, hopefully, it would get, if we include the garage, it would get people into the garage. They can use it, see how easy it is to use, and then they come back and pay the next time they come. So I say go for it.
Yeah, I agree. And then, yeah, I think that, that if we just go ahead and do it for those three days, I think it's kind of like a nice little um, opportunity for people to get a sense of the layout of the garage, a feel of the garage. It's inviting. It's, you know, I mean, yeah, I, I'm, I'm good with the whole thing. And plus, you know, when you think about it, the difference on spaces, if we deducted the seventy-nine or whatever it was from what we would have had originally. So we're only actually talking about the difference on that particular number. So I, I, it's, it's de minimis and we may, we should just do it.
And somehow, if we could get the word out to other towns, you know, Ridgewood on Saturdays in December, it's free parking. Come on down.
We can do that through Welcome Back Ridgewood. Sure, through the social media campaign. Yeah.
And then other chamber also does advertising. And when we do have the free parking, they do advertise that as part of it.
And it's not a month with five Saturdays. And the retailers really need a boost.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think that in the past, we've put the um, flashing sign up at the beginning of East Ridgewood Avenue directly, right into the cottage lot. That seems to be where everybody, if, if they're coming from out of town or if they're just coming into town, it's the best way to remind them. Then they can pull right into cottage and uh, and shop and um, you know, yeah, I, I, I think we, you know, I was in town walking uh, again this week and we really have a lot of empty spaces. So we've gotta somehow pull people into the town to uh, to shop, to park, to, to do everything. So if this will help, I'm all for it. Mike, do you have an opinion?
No, I, I agree. Uh, it's, it's three days, so it's, it's not really gonna impact the um, utility that much more than it's already been impacted. So I'm good.
Okay, and everyone's in agreement to allow the garage to be part of that as well, to be free.
Let me just ask a question though. When we do that free, are we, is it, the time limit still exist?
Technically, no, because it's hard to gauge it, but um, you know, um.
You could just put a reminder, three hours max and loosely uh, remind people. Turn over. You don't want people pulling in there and parking and leaving it there all day because in the past, the challenge has been all the employees find out about it and then they park, which was, you know.
The street, right?
Oh, I know, but if we're trying to get people into the garage and it's full already and they, you know. Maybe say first floor only because aren't the second, third levels for?
On Saturdays, no.
Oh, not on Saturdays, right. It's a Saturday.
Yeah, so we don't wanna defeat the purpose because, I just lost my voice all of a sudden. We wind up with people just saying, oh, yeah, free parking for the day. And then they, yeah, and and then we wind up doing just the opposite of what we expected. But I think it'll be, you know what we, we should do on December fifth? Let's do it and just monitor it. And then we'll kind of get a feel for what goes on and hopefully everybody's behaving themselves.
Okay. Um, if we could, we have um, two people here this evening and I'd appreciate if we could move their items up. So if um, you know, they can go do other things. The one is um, eight D three, which is the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And uh, we have our um, emergency management coordinator, Jeremy Kleiman here to um, explain or answer questions on that one. And so basically, this is to allow us to remain eligible for FEMA funding. Um, and we're a part of Bergen County's plan, which has um, been, has been approved by New Jersey Office of Emergency Management and FEMA. And the Bergen County Freeholders have adopted the plan and then we must pass a resolution also adopting the county plan. And uh, perhaps Jeremy, if you wanna say a few words more about what this plan does?
Sure, let me just turn my camera on so you can see me. Hi. Okay, so, so every five years, every municipality has to uh, recertify a natural hazard mitigation plan in order to stay eligible for FEMA uh, funding for mitigation projects, flood control, and um, a- as well as uh, uh, public assistance. So what we've done in Bergen County, as long as I can remember, um, is rather than having seventy municipalities prepare their own very in-depth, in-depth um, mitigation plan with you know, flood hazard information, critical infrastructures mapped out. It's very expensive. The county has been good enough to engage every five years a consultant that puts together a countywide plan. The consultant then uh, speaks to uh, the emergency management coordinator and the engineer in each municipality. We give input, changes based on, you know, changes to the floodplain, this kind of thing. In any event, it's a lengthy, very boring document. And they afford us the opportunity. The county pays for the whole thing. They do a countywide plan. The freeholders approve it. Uh, and then if the municipalities say, you know, me too, we're part of that plan and adopt it as our own, the Ridgewood section of it, um, then we're done. Uh, and it, and we, we're in compliance with FEMA. So uh, the current plan was updated last year by the county's consultants. It was preliminarily approved over the summer by FEMA. And so the Board of Freeholders then signed off on it. And now they're asking each municipality uh, as we do every five years, just to pass that resolution, uh, adopting it as our own. And then off we go.
Okay, any questions? I didn't think it was a boring document, honestly. I, I found it to be just
Kudos to you, Mayor.
Any, any questions? Nothing? Everybody's good? All right.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Enjoy your vacation.
The other item is eight E one, under operations, the Green Acres diversion and the submission of the pre-application. This is a resolution to authorize that submission to Green Acres. Um, and I think I'll let Janet Frickie go through the steps as she's been involved with this since the very beginning, which began about ten years ago, believe it or not, trying to um, find replacement property for this diversion.
This um, this is the, the Green Acres um, saga that you've heard about for many years. There's always another twist and whatever about it, but just to remind you that the land that was diverted was point three eight acres. And to uh, comply with restitution, we have to do a two to one ratio. So it's at least point seven six. We've um, we've come up with two properties that are already owned by the village that could be used for these categories, so we wouldn't have to purchase land. And um, we've been, we have a consultant and we've been working very closely with Green Acres at each time, so we don't waste time by doing this study or that study and, and, you know, kind of do what they want. So we're kind of at that point. We're looking for a resolution to approve the pre-application, which is the first to the last. The first and the next one will be the final uh, report. Their total report is about twelve hundred pages. So you just got the executive summary. They, they don't fool around with environmental testing. We've done all kinds of environmental testing and everything has come up clean and as we would hope for. So um, the two um, locations that we've identified, one is East Side Hammond Road. There's a little um, a small property on a dead end and it would make a lovely passive park. We've seen some, like in North Carolina, there's bog parks. It's a little wet and it'll be something different for this area and pretty, uh, not too invasive of the area. The other is um, Marlborough Road, which is a paper road. And it's up by Mountain Avenue and in the back, there's parkland. So we, we're changing, we're putting an easement on some of the land there that won't affect the homeowners in any way. But we'll protect the uh, open space for years to come. So um, just wondered, do you have any other, do you have any questions about this or is that, it's kind of, hopefully it's simple? But um, anyway, any questions?
Yeah, so this came up in our Parks and Rec meeting and they just asked um, what we anticipated to be the timing. Once everything, they were, they were trying to figure out the timing and I said we didn't really have a, a timeline, but, but that we had a plan and the plan was moving forward. So do, can you even anticipate the timing on all of this or?
Well, I realized, you know, coming to speak about this, I was wondering, you know, if I were sitting in your shoes, I'd wanna know timing too. Cause the timing has, goes on and on and then there's another right and a left and a, and I do this. So roughly this report, once we get it out, once we, you know, you guys pass the resolution, we can forward it on to be what, to the State House Committee to review. That we're, in normal times, we're thinking about a month. But we know we're not in normal times and there've been furloughed and the workers we're dealing with. And so we'll just hope for the best. And then the next one is the final um, the final application and which is tweaking more of the same. We'll still have to have some more app, um, consultants. We'll have to have a formal, another formal appraisal. There will be, there was a hearing in twenty seventeen. There will be another hearing that we will do, let everyone know. I heard that the neighbors in that uh, neighborhood wanna know about it. Well, you know, I'm sure that we'll distribute letters to all surrounding people as well as we'll, we'll highlight it to people so that everyone knows and can get their comments in.
Okay, thanks.
And isn't the final um, step in the process, legislature has to approve it, the state legislature?
As the, the state, the State House Committee is the part of the legislature that it goes through. I don't know exactly how they relate, but that's a pretty significant place to have to put your documents. But we've gotten positives and, you know, um, through this. And so we're hopeful that, that this is gonna just move it to the next phase. But this is as far as we've ever gotten. And we've never, you know, and I appreciate, you know, you're listening to our various combinations of lands, available lands that we could make parklands. And we haven't had a lot of choices, but we're very fortunate with the, the, the solution, I think, that we came up with.
So I just, I, I just wanted to add, I, I was reading this whole report, Janet, and I had to think back. I couldn't remember if it was two thousand sixteen or seventeen that we took our road trip to Trenton.
It was in that range.
Sometime in that with the maps and going through all the properties as we were on our way down there to meet with Green Acres to have this conversation. And so the fact that that piece of that conversation is now memorialized in this document is astonishing to me, but it's more astonishing that it was, seems just like yesterday, but really it was so many years have passed since we took that little road trip with, with the, and you know, I think it was just me, you, Heather and Tim in the car. So looking at it now, it's, it's just amazing. So I, I wanted to actually just say thank you to um, you and to Heather for putting this together because it is, it's been a long time. I think that um, the deputy mayor and I and obviously Councilwoman, while she lived with it, we've all lived with it over these years, but that road trip is just, it's just funny. And not on this paper now, so, so I appreciate it. So thank you.
Well, it was a very effective way of, of moving the project forward, even though it's still a couple of years since then. Good, thank you.
It's a very creative solution. Um, so thank you to whoever came up with this.
It's, it's all of these people together, just, you know, talking, playing off each other, or what do you think? Or, you know, make another list and, you know, the, some of them didn't cut it. I mean, if you could see the stacks in my office, it's because of those are the lists. And I think probably now with moving this forward, I won't need those lists anymore.
I, I think it was like a really, it was just like a brainstorming collaborative effort, but I think that a lot of the conversation, the, 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 the real the conversation, the meat of it was on that road trip. So it was a good one, anyway.
For people who are watching, yes, the language may sound odd, diversion. The reason it's called diversion is because the original park property was diverted for affordable housing. So now the state requires that because of that diversion, we have to replace the parkland. So that's where the term comes from.
Well stated, very well stated. It wasn't anything anyone purposely did. It wasn't anything anyone purposely did, it was an error and it will be corrected.
Yeah, and I think in fairness, it goes way back, I mean, decades. But I did notice in the, very early in the report, it doesn't indicate that that was um, for affordable, but it does, it mentions affordable at the, at the end of it, but it doesn't state it in the beginning. I don't know if that's, I just have it for, for whatever reason.
There is a mention that it was diverted for a compelling public need.
But it doesn't.
Was acknowledged.
Right, acknowledged in that context, but it doesn't state in the very beginning that it was what it was. And so I thought that that was relevant to the, uh, germane to this. And it, it does say it at the end, but I thought it was, it, it maybe could have been stated, but it's.
It may say it also in those, you know, thousand pages in between. Cause it's very well, um, we, we respond to all of their questions. And they certainly want to know why and how did this happen? And we've done that, including, I know I've done research on the Ridgewood News to go way back, um, to find out what went on. And it was, it was startling and the council just wanted it shut down because of behavior that was inappropriate there.
Yeah, well, anyway, well, thank you, thank you, everyone for getting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we'll go back to our regular um, order, back to budget. The twenty twenty uh, budget transfers. This is an annual resolution which transfers funds from departments who have extra funds to those who do not have adequate funds. The reasons for those transfers are found on the last page of the um, resolution. And um, again, this takes place in November and December. Um, and uh, it allows those um, operations to continue that perhaps didn't have adequate funds for various reasons. So.
So I, I actually had a question on that, on item number four. It says traffic signal, oh, we increase signage cost materials for special events. Can we get an itemized list of that, what that specifically is?
Yeah, it's probably for the pedestrian mall, for the grab and go, for that type of thing. But yeah, if we could get it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the next item is shared services agreement. Again, this is an annual agreement for the child health clinics. We have a child, um, we have a uh, shared services agreement with Glen Rock and Fair Lawn. We've had it with Glen Rock for over ten years and this would be the fourth year for Fair Lawn. Um, we are required to provide all municipalities a child health conference for comprehensive preventive child um, care of infants and children up to age eighteen with particular emphasis on the medically indigent. Um, each municipality pays one third of the cost. So that's not to exceed, and that's of the pediatrician, and that's not to exceed one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars each. Um, and it's a good way for the three of us to share this service for our residents who uh, need to use it.
Uh, Heather?
Yes.
Where is this clinic?
It's held, um, it has been held here at times, but I don't think it's being held here now. I'm not sure, um, exactly, they, in other words, they go to a, a building and hold it. I don't know where it's being held currently because of COVID, but I could find out. Uh, the next item is again, another uh, annual resolution. This is for Public Health and Nursing Services. Does, um, we award to Valley Community Health. The total amount is not to exceed eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollar and one cents. It's usually actually less than ten thousand dollars. Um, this provides um, nursing service for communicable disease investigations, child health clinics, adult health clinics, school audits and flu clinics. Um, health education services are also provided, which includes the annual rate loss challenge, the wellness festival, um, and various other required programs throughout the year at no charge to the village. Um, this does not take into, into account the public nursing that's been used during COVID. Because those hours have increased dramatically because they help with, um, you know, the beginning of the contact tracing, they help with, um, you know, getting the information from the hospital or, or from the labs. And so that's going to be actually done, indicated as separate resolution. But in normal times, if it were like a measles outbreak somewhere, they would look into that. But because COVID is so, um, you know, encompassing of, of so many people, it, it took many, many hours um, to do that type of work and it continues today. In fact, we did enlist um, some of the school nurses who had been furloughed because, well, they were working because of the fact that the schools were closed and they also helped out during that timeframe. Um, the next item is the physician for the child health clinic. Um, we did go out for eight quotes for pediatricians and we received one reply, which is Dr. Wayne Naruki. And he is of Rutherford, New Jersey, and he has actually been working in the clinics for the past eleven years. Um, they're requesting to move forward with him. His salary is um, a hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour. The clinics generally run from two to three hours per month and they're held ten months out of the year. Um, and it's actually the same hourly rate as it has been for the past two years. Again, this is one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and it's split, um, you know, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per uh, town, so for the three towns.
Does Dr. Naruki come up here?
He does, yes. Uh, the next one is declaring uh, fire hose, which is damaged and actually failed during the annual pressure testing uh, surplus property. And then we can dispose of it. We'll move on to policy. Uh, the first one is um, what our speaker was talking about um, earlier this evening. Um, so almost twenty years ago, the mobile concession unit was purchased and dedicated to the village of Ridgewood in um, memory of John Van De Brindur, who was one of our twelve residents who was um, unfortunately passed away in nine eleven. And since then, the unit has been made available to residents, youth sports groups and local social service organizations. Um, as the speaker indicated, they found out this year, they have to put in a fire suppression um, uh, system and that's three thousand two hundred dollars. Junior football has graciously um, agreed to donate that money to us. So we'll have a resolution to accept that donation at next week's meeting. Uh, the next is regulations for municipal parking facilities. This um, started out as um, basically rules and regulations for the new garage. However, um, we realized that these behaviors that we're trying to regulate should not take place at any of our parking facilities, whether they be a lot or the garage. So this um, controls things such as skateboarding, riding bicycles in the garage, except for level one, where we actually have a bike depot where people can go. Um, loitering, consuming or using tobacco or nicotine containing products or alcohol or narcotics within um, those buildings or within those lots. And it's actually found under um, peace and good order, I believe, in uh, public places and also municipal parking facilities.
So I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So should. Would this be like combined in one section?
I think it's under um, peace and good order, which is chapter two fifteen.
Right, but in other words, it's, we, we're talking about alcohol and it seems like it should be two separate pieces. No, or maybe I'm, I'm just wrong, that, it seems like it, it should be.
Well, it's including, it's including everything that, that we don't want to occur in those areas. We don't want alcohol consumption, we don't want drug dealing or drug using. We don't want um, bicyclists on the upper levels. We don't want skateboarders coming down the ramps, we don't want.
You know, I'm saying the way it's written, it just seems like too much in that one piece. It looks like.
We can put it into paragraphs.
Separated into sex chapter two fifteen, seven, it looks like it needs to be in either an A B or something because it looks like.
We can make it into two sections, sure, paragraphs, sure.
More than two sections.
Yeah, I feel like it.
A, B, C, D, each, each clause here is a separate type of violation.
Yeah, yeah, because I think that, like, if you go to read that, it, 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 it really does need to be broken out.
It's not comprehensive.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it makes it just a little bit more um, readable. All right, Matt, did you have something to say, Matt?
No, no, I didn't, I mean, I didn't prepare it, but I just think that it, it made sense to keep it under the one chapter, to break it up and then try and categorize the different violations. Not to keep them separately, but to categorize them, one in terms of um, you know, alcohol, smoking, that type of thing. And the other one is skateboarding, bicycling, that kind of stuff. Trying to keep those separate makes some sense. It's just a matter of what's gonna help uh, people understand it and what's gonna help the police enforce it. So that's really the two things you want to look at.
Yeah, so I, I can go with like maybe two or three sections, but I just don't think it should be just one because it's too much.
There's also a typo.
Okay, wait, where's the typo?
The last line, um, where it says prescription from. Or from, the four comes out. And why would a person have to have a prescription from a New Jersey licensed physician? What if the person lives in New York?
True, we could just put it from a licensed physician.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Heather, I. Actually.
Talk to the police about that, just, just to make sure that that's, that's not an issue for them. But just talk to the police about that because that could be an issue for them.
And just curious, because can, in certain states, can PAs do medications? Can they do? Like, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, and just.
So in other words, if you're saying a.
About a medical provider or something.
Licensed medical.
Medical provider, right.
Heather, I got a question for you though. So this is saying pu- public places and municipal parking facilities. And this came up at our Parks and Rec meeting the other day about people riding their bikes recklessly at Vets Field and nearly hitting the walkers. So are, is this going to apply to Vets Field where you're not, it's a sidewalk? It's considered a sidewalk, right?
Right.
I don't, I don't know, Bernie, we're, you know.
Well, he could also.
Yeah, that keeps coming up because bikers are riding really fast on the Vets Field track.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
The walkers have their plugs in their ears, listening to their music and they're nearly getting hit by people biking. And, and it's an accident waiting to happen.
We could indicate in this public place, possibly walking paths around fields or something.
Yeah.
And then that would allow us to, you know, do something about it.
Cause I know that some people have little kids on their little trikes.
Yes.
That's not, that's not the issue, but I guess Matt legally is a little trike considered a bicycle and, you know.
No, I don't think so. Um, the, I, I think that may be a separate issue than the parking, than the public parking facilities.
Yeah, the way this is written, it's public places.
Yeah, this says, in any and all public municipal parking, municipal public parking facilities.
And public places.
And public places, right. So I'm just saying, it, it may make some sense to separate the two. Um, and keep the parking garage and the parking lots kind of separate and um, do with that. So we can, I mean, we certainly can talk about that.
Mind it a little.
But no, I don't, I wouldn't think any, Bernie, to answer your question, I don't think that would be a bicycle.
So I, I have another question about the um, uh, narcotic for which an individual does not possess a prescription by a licensed medical provider. I mean, that's open to interpretation, do we have to be real specific on that to say?
That's why I suggest maybe you should talk to the police, find out what their, what their needs are and, and how that should be described, best described for their purposes, so.
Right.
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay.
You know, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna mention, I didn't mention it in my, in my field committee report, but I am gonna mention it because it is, like I said, a concern. Um, we had another serious vandalism incident on Stevens Field. Uh, it was arson, they, they were able to catch them on video. They weren't able to see faces, but they did see two individuals ride up on bicycles with hoodies on. They used something to stuff into the back of the Portageon and lit them on fire. And if anybody saw the pictures, there was basically a melted mess on Stevens Field. So um, you know, that's the other, that's the other piece to this that, you know, we're being very vigilant about making sure that nobody does something to damage any of our facilities. And uh, you know, this kind of falls under that as well because, you know, again, it's one thing to, to be kids and to be, you know, causing a little mischief here and there, but, but this is considered arson. So parents that are out there listening, make sure you know where your kids are, cause it happened after midnight. Uh, and they appeared to be, you know, teenage kids on their bicycles. Were they charged? They don't know who they were, they couldn't see their faces. So, but you know, we're being vigilant in making sure all of the facilities are being monitored.
Okay, uh, the next item is the review of the November ninth public meeting agenda. Again, I want to remind everyone, the meeting is on Monday due to the Wednesday holiday. Um, we don't have any proclamations. We do have um, some resolutions for Ridgewood Water. Uh, Title fifty-nine approval and award of contract for well improvements or professional services contract for various transmission and distribution infrastructure improvements or professional services contract, attorneys for PFAS insurance recovery and adopt PFAS master plan, PFAS planning and treatment study. We have introduction of ordinances for peace and good order, which was this garage one. We'll sort it out and um, you know, get better definitions perhaps. Um, amend chapter one forty-five fees for the Ridgewood parking permits and central business district employee parking stickers and hang tags. The only question I did have, um, I know we discussed about the um, CBD parking stickers for the employees. Um, and there was some discussion about possibly waiving the thirty dollar fee for twenty twenty-one. I don't know what you wanted to do with that, if you wanted to do that or not.
I'm in favor of it, I think the more that we can get them into the parking lots, like we were just talking about. I, you know, we don't want any.
Yeah, I think we said, I think we did agree to it because we said maybe it would, you know, become habit forming. They get used to it and then next year, they'll pay the thirty dollar sticker because they're used to parking in the parking lots.
Okay. I mean, they have already because they do, the, the lot walnut is full almost every day with the CBD employees. So hopefully that will become the norm on the fourth floor of the uh, parking garage as well. Um, the next one is the non-union salary ordinance and management salary ordinance. And then authorizing the special emergency appropriations related to COVID nineteen. Um, the public hearings, we have several um, amending vehicles and traffic for placement of stop signs at various locations. Amending chapter one ninety land use and development, requiring an affordable housing set aside. Amending chapter one ninety for creating the AH three affordable housing zone district. Amending chapter one ninety for amending B one and B two districts for affordable housing. Amend chapter one ninety land use and development for affordable housing for creating the B three zone district and affordable housing administration ordinance for development fees. Amending chapter one forty-five fees for Grayden Pool uh, membership fees and other Grayden Pool fees. Amendment chapter one forty-five fees for tennis patch fees and amend chapter one forty-five fees for day camp fees. Our resolutions include awarding a contract, interstate contract for Grayden Pool wellhead repair, awarding professional services contract, Valley Hospital, Department of Community Health and community benefit, Public Health and Nursing Services. Award professional services contract pediatrician for monthly child health clinics. Authorize shared services agreement for the twenty twenty-one uh, health clinics with Fair Lawn and Glen Rock. Authorizing twenty twenty budget transfers, authorizing the tax collector to charge for the mailing of the tax sale notices. Authorizing the cancellation of general capital ordinance balances. Authorizing submission of an application for the twenty twenty-one recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities grant. Uh, declare property surplus for the fire department, accepting the donation of the fire suppression equipment for the mobile concession stand, approving the updated Bergen County's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Authorizing submission of the pre-application to Green Acres for Green Acres diversion. Approving the twenty twenty holiday parking plan in the central business district. Establishing rules and regulations for virtual meetings. Authorizing application to. Authorizing application to division of local government services for special emergency appropriations. Authorizing a settlement of claim for the Oak Manor apartment building. Appoint members to Parks Recreation and Conservation Board and approve renewal of the one-year lease of the gatehouse of the Irene Habernet Hall Park. And then that's it.
I have a question about one thing. Go ahead, mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Tim. You go first. I'm looking for something. Go ahead.
Uh, the one about establish rules and regulations for virtual meetings. Is that the, um, financial, uh?
Local finance notice.
Yeah, the local finance notice. Okay. I, when I read it, I saw that it requires advance notice to include the, the phone number for call in.
It's on our ads.
Yeah.
Okay. And it also says any documents that would have been, produced in person at an in-person meeting also have to be.
And starting next week, we'll have it on the website next to the agenda.
Great. Okay. And then what I didn't see in those rules, and I was surprised not to see it, is that, um, officials are required to have their cameras on. And, you know, when we show up at, in person, people can see we're there. But when we're in remote settings, we can turn off our camera, walk away. We could be a mile away. And I think our obligation is to be present. So I was surprised not to see that.
We can add that if you want to. That's up to the council.
I, I mean, look, when there are times in the real world when we're not virtual, the people say, excuse me, I have to go to the ladies room and your is not on you. So you shut your camera off and you walk away. So I think in fairness, I don't see us do that all that often, but there are times when people have to excuse themselves and, and that's kind of your off camera.
You can leave your camera on if you have to excuse yourself. Then we'll know when you come back.
Maybe just a little off putting, but, um, I guess we could talk about it. Let me, let's just, my two things. I thought that we had, um, is there somebody else having some radio? No? Okay. So we were doing the alternate for shade tree commission. Steve, right? Uh, he's not on here. Michael?
I didn't see it. I was, I was gonna.
Committee is enclosed. No?
Yeah, but I thought we already said to.
Okay.
Sorry too. And then I had a question on a sub, whether or not something is substantive or not. Matt, I think on thirty-eight seventeen in ordinance, we have a public hearing. Seventeen, I believe. I'm trying to just pull it up. Hang on. And I don't my thing here, but I think we may have had a typo on it as, uh, on a, um, rental. Rent. Twenty percent. And instead of sale twenty percent, set a, uh, twenty percent, um, set aside. So I, I'm just trying to pull it up here and I'm not, because we already did the introduction, I'm not sure that it's.
More than likely, if it's a typo, it doesn't change the substantive aspect of the, of the matter, particularly if there were backup papers before it. So I think we can certainly make that change on, and make an amend on the floor with regard to that.
Okay. Cause it should be, I, I'm going to go back. Maybe we'll.
Yeah, if you can, point it out to me because I don't know which ordinance you're talking about the, um.
I'm pretty sure it's thirty-eight seventeen on the chapter one ninety land use and development.
Susan, it's thirty-eight sixteen.
Was it six? Do you have?
A one.
So on sixteen A one, instead of being a fifteen percent set aside, it's a twenty.
It says twenty.
And I, I think that, that on a rental, it's always a fifteen and.
Rentals are fifteen and the set aside for ownership is twenty.
Twenty. So.
It says twenty for both.
Thank you.
All right. That should have been, that should have been corrected. That was just a mistake. And I think the discussion, everything else has led to fifteen. So.
Right. So we could just amend that on the floor?
We'll have to amend that on the floor. Yes.
Okay, fine. Okay. Then that was my only other thing. Okay, good. Thank you. Thanks, Green. Thank you for pulling that up.
All right. So were there any, um, resolutions you wanted off of the consent agenda?
No. If we're all good, we're going, everyone's good. We're good with that. We're going to go back to comments from the public not to exceed five minutes per person.
Okay. Any members want to make a comment? Please raise your hand. I am showing none.
Very good. All right. With that, um, we thank everyone for joining us and we'll take a resolution to go into closed session. Everyone out there in the world, stay safe, be good and, um, see you next week.
Okay.
Monday.
Monday. I, I meant Monday. I started the same day. I had to process that in my mind. Monday.
Be resolved by the village council, the village of Ridgewood, that the village council meet in closed session on November fourth, two thousand twenty at seven thirty PM. Or sooner or after, if the matter on the agenda can be reached in the sec closed session. Be held via Zoom teleconferencing due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Be further resolved if the matters to be discussed in closed session are limited to legal matters to include one village, one vote and personnel matters to include appointments to boards and committees and non-union and ma- management salary ordinances. These matters are allowable under NJSA ten hole four dash twelve at SEC. Be further resolved if the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to the general public when such matters have been determined by resolution of the village council. Have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Night.
In next Zoom room.